Great. Thanks, everybody. I know that we're gonna get some more folks on, but I think we should just get started. I know you all probably have a lot of Zooms. I really want to thank everybody for joining our Lunch and Learn series. We really started doing some of these Lunch and Learn series during the start of the pandemic, and we have really enjoyed the folks that have joined us. We really want to keep folks connected. I know we'll be back in person soon, but we'll probably still do a bunch of these webinars because we really appreciate the ability to bring in people from around the state to discuss these issues. So it's really exciting. I want to tell you a little bit about IEC before introducing our awesome guest speaker. We were founded in 1975 by a group of dedicated grassroots environmentalists. We have led advocacy campaigns by allowing environmental organizations to pool their resources and create a higher profile for environmental issues. Today, we represent more than 90 environmental and community organizations and over 400 individual members. If you're not a member of IEC and are able to give, please consider joining today by using the link that's in the chat box. I'm Jen Walling. I'm the executive director. And I'll introduce the speaker in a second, but just a few housekeeping items. All attendees are muted by default. If you joined via Zoom, please use the chat function to ask questions, add comments, or provide resources. Time permitting, we will take live questions at the end of the session. I know that our speaker today would love to have a lot of questions, so keep them coming. You can put them in the chat at any time. And Tanisha Harris, who is our staff person on today's, although we do have other staff people on today, including Danny Revellis and I think it's just Danny, but Jeff Sheldon, Ayana Simba, thank you to our staff that is on today. If you're joining by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand, but otherwise, just use the chat, raise your hand, and we will call on you and make sure everybody's questions are answered. This is a really exciting topic, and IEC itself has started to engage in city council lobbying over the last few years. We are registered with the city and really looking forward to this educational opportunity. For today's session, we are very pleased to have Tiffany Sanders Sastran, who is at the Chicago Park District, but previously was working with the mayor's office, but I'll let her give a little bit of her background. She is just excellent, knows this whole process. So if you have questions that you would like to see covered now, you know, this is the time. So I'm gonna hand it over to Tiffany to introduce herself and then head into her presentation. So thank you so much for joining us, Tiffany. Oh, and I guess the last thing, if people would like CLE, I'm gonna put the CLE spreadsheet into the chat. You just fill that out with your ARDC number, name, email address, and I'll do it at the end as well, but you will have to put your info in there, and I will send you a certificate. So that is the last item. All right, Tiffany.
Well, thank you so much for the introduction, Jen. I'm really excited to be here. As Jen said, my name's Tiffany. I think I'm on my... So I knew nothing about city government until I was in law school, decided that I was interested in municipal law, and randomly applied for a job with the city's Legislative Reference Bureau. That was about six years ago, and here I am. So I started with the city's Legislative Reference Bureau, which is different than the state version, if y'all are familiar with that. But it is, and we can go through all these different things later, but it is a creature of the city council. It is supposed to be, which it is, I'm not saying... I'll say a lot of things that are maybe politically incorrect, and I'll try to be candid and honest with you all. So it's supposed to be an independent branch that prepares legislation, does research, provides legal advice to all of the aldermen. It does do that in some form, but there's also the city's law department that does a lot of that work. And actually, I'm gonna give a shout out to one of my mentors, who's on call. His name is Jeff Levine. Everything, most, I wouldn't say everything that I've learned, but probably a good percentage of what I've learned has been through Jeff Levine. So if you ever run into him in the wild, like chase him down and ask him questions about city council procedure. But so the LRB is there. We do a lot of ceremonial resolutions, a lot of research, a lot of working things out with aldermen. And then I was there for about two years, went over to the city's finance department, did their government affairs work, lasted there for about eight months until I got asked to join Mayor Lightfoot's transition team and then started an IGA in the mayor's office and stayed there for about a year and a half with Mayor Lightfoot and then joined the park district a few months ago, or actually almost a year ago. So I'm gonna share my screen and share a presentation. Hopefully, I don't bore everyone to death. That's certainly not my goal. I'm gonna try to be the most exciting, engaging CLE presenter you've ever had. Big goals, big goals, but this is kind of how I'm thinking this thing will work. So we're gonna go through how the mayor's office is set up, which could be an hour, that could be an hour-long CLE as well, and then another few minutes on how city council is set up. I struggled with whether to do the rules of order procedure first or how a bill becomes a law first. So I'm going to, and that's in quotes, because those words are not used in city council, but I thought it was a five-nod Schoolhouse Rock. So I'm gonna kind of go back and forth between those two things, and then hopefully we'll have a good amount of time for questions at the end. And honestly, I would prefer, if you guys have lots of questions, it would make my life a lot easier and probably will fill in the gaps because a lot of this comes from a little boy. So the mayor's office. So assuming most people here are familiar with the structure of city government and how it has historically worked, and that gives you a lot of context. I think one of the first things I ever read was Boss by Mike Royco. That gives you a lot of information just about how the city used to work in the dynamic here. And so, yes, there are written rules. And today, we'll be talking a lot about what's written down and what is actually enumerated in the code. But I think a lot of understanding city council is being able to read between lines and understand the nuance here. That's really, really important. I didn't even realize that there were this many sections of the code that referred to the mayor's office. I don't know if Jen, if your team has shared them out, but I went through the city code. If you want to ever take a look at it or gander, go take a look. The link is here. You can also just Google it. But these are all the sections that apply to the mayor's office. Some of them are incredibly important, like observance of flag days and decorations of public buildings. But one of the most important things is to understand the structure of our city. So I guess this would be extremely controversial to say, but we typically have had a strong mayor, weak council structure. And you'll see that in a lot of cities with mayors and city councils. And now, sometimes it's reversed, especially in smaller municipalities, where you might have a part-time mayor. But in Chicago, we have a full-time mayor that's fully devoted to their work. Historically, the council generally always stood with mayor. Now, that's changed significantly over the last few years and as politics have changed. But the mayor is the chief executive of the city. Just like federal government, we also have a legislative branch, but I'm like, and we also have an administrative branch, but they're not as involved in lawmaking. That mostly is driven by the mayor's office. So behind the mayor's office, she has a bunch of different departments and things that she focuses on. You'll see there's a deputy mayor of economic development. There's a deputy mayor of education, health issues, public safety. There's a lot of offices contained within the mayor's office, but also all of the city departments aren't necessarily underneath the mayor's office, but work very, very closely with the mayor's office. And one thing to note is that the mayor appoints the commissioners or directors or leaders of the vast majority of city departments. Now, you'll hear about something, I don't actually know the difference between an office and a department, but sometimes you'll hear people talk about the office of, like, mayor's office of people with disabilities, which is not actually housed within the mayor's office and sort of its own separate thing, but that person is appointed by the mayor. You also have things like traditional departments, like transportation, water. You have the police department, right? These large departments where the mayor is responsible for the appointment and works very, very closely with the heads of those departments. And so you can't really sneak anything by if the mayor's office is unhappy or doesn't like a proposal. Know that the mayor's office and the departments are working very, very closely with one another and help we sort of leave thought on those issues. There's also a couple, and these are just some weird quirks, not to diss anybody in the law department, but our city code is extremely confusing and not super straightforward. So don't be shocked that there's some strange things in here. I didn't know the mayor had a secretary. I learned that when I looked this up to prepare this presentation. But also, we have a chief sustainability officer that is enumerated in the code and a chief risk officer. That's enumerated in the code. City council. So we're all here to talk about city council. You know that we have 50 aldermen. They all represent different wards. I could have put up a ward map, but we all know that that's changing soon. And we won't discuss that issue because that's also controversial. But the city council is really unique. I remember the first time I came to a city council meeting, I was just, I was not prepared. I think it was Black History Month, the whole Black Caucus showing up in their kente cloth, and we had Nick Sado in his wheelchair, he's got a belt or bowtie on, and all of these people making political statements at the city council meeting. And it was a lot for one person to take in that had not been exposed to it. Before COVID, city council was a really lively day, lots of people running around, and really kind of very reflective of the chaos that is going on at city council with 50 aldermen. They're all kind of chiefs of their little kingdoms or their wards. Among the 50 aldermen, there are a number of caucuses. I guess I'll discuss the most active caucuses, not necessarily most important. There's a women's caucus. There's a progressive caucus, which is also complicated because before, I would say it was the left-leaning part of city council. And I don't know if anyone knows Scott Wagisback, but he used to be this like lightning rod, like super aggressive. Not, he's not an aggressive person. He was actually a lovely person, but like viewed as a super liberal, super left, like leading the left charge. He was the chairman of the progressive caucus for a long time. He's since become the chairman of the Committee on Finance. His role has somewhat changed, but the progressive caucus has also changed quite a lot because of the election of a lot of members of the Democratic Socialists of America. And so they're also part of the progressive caucus and it's still maintaining their membership. But they've also splintered off into their own caucus. So we've got progressive caucus, which is kind of left, DSA caucus, which is really far left, but those members are part of the progressive caucus. Then we have another caucus, two more caucuses that I'll point out of note, which are the Black Caucus and the Latino Caucus. Now, the Black Caucus wields a lot of power because it has a lot of members. I think there are 22 members or 23 members of the Black Caucus. So if they were to vote as a block, it'd be pretty powerful. Fortunately for the mayor, they don't always do that, so we're lucky on that front. The Latino Caucus also, and you can Google all this stuff. You can look it up. I'm not gonna go through the history. The Latino Caucus also has a very large membership. Sometimes Black Caucus and Latino Caucus vote together, which would create a supermajority. I've never seen that happen, but it's certainly something that could. And then there are some sort of informal caucuses, right? There's the northwest side of the city that tends to vote as a group word. And then there's kind of this pro-police-public-safety caucus that isn't real and, you know, isn't written down anywhere. But as you get to know the dynamics of the different aldermen, you'll see that people typically tend to vote in a certain way. That's also reflective of how our city is structured, right? A lot of our public workers, a lot of our police officers all live in certain parts of the city, and that's reflected in the people that represented and represent them. So they tend to vote in that manner. So really, having a good understanding of the map and just seeing where someone, what area someone represents will tell you a lot about their priorities. I do think the aldermen stay very true to representing what their constituents want. So it can be very informative information. There's one city council meeting every month, for the most part. And then there's budget season where there are like, there's a council meeting every week for a month, almost. But we'll talk about that separately. There's also a bunch of committees, which I will get to later. But they do have a regular meeting once a month. And another topic that I'll talk about is when chaos ensues and the city council meeting might be delayed, it might be halted in the middle, it might be continued, they might have a special meeting. There's a lot of different things that go on. One of the most important things is that they do, well, one of the most important aspects of city council is compensation. I know that sounds crazy. The aldermen all get a salary. That's not really that important, but they also get expense allowance, which is very, very small and really not adequate to support an office in the way that you would, I think it would support two staffers. But what's really important are the committees. So if you have a city council committee and you're the chairman of a committee, there are expenses associated with the running of that committee. You have to process paperwork. You have to, you know, field certain requests, work with other departments. And so having a committee is really a reflection of how much spending power an alderman has. Now, they obviously can do fundraising and do other stuff, and so that's all separate. But just know that this committee structure looms very large in the horizon. What else is here? That's really important. That's basically it. The rules of order and procedure. So there's this, there's this little book that's much coveted around the city hall that has the rules of order procedure, but you probably won't be able to get your hands on one unless you know somebody. But they are all publicly available. Fortunately, I've included a PDF. Let's see, jump to that PDF. Can you all see the, you can see the rules of order now? Okay, so it's long. It's 24 pages. I don't expect that anybody has read all of them or knows them inside out, but I want to say they are available on the clerk's site. It behooves all of you, if you have anything to do with city council at any time, to print these out and hold them close and near and dear to your heart and maybe just browse through them because they're really helpful in understanding what's happening, but they're also kind of cryptic and won't tell you exactly what's happening. I'm gonna talk about a few roles in city council. So there's the mayor. There's also a vice mayor, who is Tom Tunny. He's also chairman of the zoning committee. There is, so Tom Tunny, as vice mayor, there's not really much required unless the mayor was to become castigated. The vice mayor would step in until the council could vote amongst themselves to elect a new temporary mayor. So that's really truly the role of vice mayor. There's the president pro tem, who, that's a really interesting role because that person steps in in the absence of the mayor. Mayor Lightfoot doesn't use her president pro tem as much as other mayors haven't asked, but you might notice during council meetings, especially with Mayor Emanuel, he would leave at some point and Alderman Loreno would step in and sort of take his place and take over the running of the meeting and the conducting of the meeting. The president pro tem does that and is sort of the parliament, not parliamentarian, but takes in the place of the mayor. The president pro tem is also an ex parte? I don't think that's the right word, but the mayor, the president pro tem is a member of every committee by default. Now, most president pro tems don't exercise that right, but know that president pro tem can vote at any committee meeting if they want a swing vote, or if you really need somebody and the president pro tem shows up and they're not on the committee list and says, "I'm here to vote," that's a big flag that maybe something exciting is about to happen. The president pro tem is also responsible for the Legislative Reference Bureau, which is where I used to work and is under the control and supervision. They don't typically interfere in the work and everything that's running, that the LRB does is confidential with the aldermen that they're working with, but they oversee it kind of like the way that you would oversee a committee. I'm gonna skip ahead to a lot of rules that aren't as interesting. One of the things to note is the agenda for the city council meeting. Now, I'm learning very quickly that the way the Illinois Legislature does things is very different than the way the city council does things. The city council and their agenda is very vague, right? It tells you the general things that are going to happen throughout the meeting, but it doesn't tell you exactly what ordinances or resolutions are up for consideration. It just sort of tells you the rundown show. And some of these are extremely confusing, and why would you know what this means, right? If someone can actually read the entire journal proceedings of the last meeting, that's like hundreds and hundreds of pages, right? So it's a good, it's a good sort of understanding of how things are structured, but know that they can motion to take things out of order. They can do things out of order. People can intercheck. Lots of trauma goes down. Sometimes they fight with each other. Sometimes people call something, it's called a motion for suspension of the rules. If that happens, your agenda goes out the window and people can kind of do whatever they want. Now, if everybody's on good behavior, usually it's just to honor someone for a ceremonial resolution, but if people are on bad behavior, it means something traumatic, exciting. So go ahead and keep this in your back pocket. It'll always be posted on the clerk's site. It's usually not changed, but that's the basics of what are there. And then I'm gonna skip ahead to rule 35. I know, right? There's all these rules, and then I just skip all of them and jump right to the meat and potatoes, which is 35. So this is a listing of all of the committees that exist within city council. Now, rule 36 goes, I think it's rule 36, no, 37. Of course, how could I be so foolish? Rule 35 is a listing of all the different committees. Now, they're not necessarily tied to a particular department. They're not tied to particular set issues sometimes. And sometimes the names are rather vague, right? And what it doesn't tell you is there's this kind of unwritten ranking of importance among these committees. Obviously, cash is king, so finance and budget are kind of the most important committees that exist. They have the largest committee budgets. They have the largest staff. Most of the most important controversial legislation will go through those committees when Chairman Berg was chairman of the Committee on Finance. Literally, any issue that he was interested in, it didn't matter if it was about the environment, public safety, education, nothing. He was interested in it and went through the Committee on Finance. And if you go through and read the description on the Committee of Finance, you can see that it's written in a way where everything is transgenerally related to finance. Chairman Wagisback has not been cavalier in his interpretation of the jurisdiction of that committee, but certainly you can, you could do it that way. Actually helped write some of the descriptions of these committees along with my dear friend Jeff. So yes, it wasn't intentional, but it gives us a lot of flexibility to do what we need to do and work with different personalities that exist in city council and deal with the unique makeup of every committee. One of the committees that seems innocuous and boring is the Committee on Committees and Rules. People like to call that the committee where things go to die. I like to call it the committee where action happens. So when you were signing legislations to committees and deciding which committee is going to discuss your matter and consider your matter, if your item ends up in rules, that means that either one, someone intentionally decided they wanted to hold up the legislation that you're trying to introduce, or two, it's actually a matter about the rules of the city council, which happens like once a year. Usually, it's because people want your legislation to die. However, you can force a vote on things that are in rules, but it takes time. It takes some procedural motions. It can be rather dramatic. But rules is an important committee to look out for. When there's rules committee meetings scheduled, it's typically not something important. So you want to keep your eye out. There's also a thing called joint committees. It's not really anything formal. It's just when two committees get together and decide this matter applies to both of us. We want to hear this together, and both of our membership are gonna vote on this item. It can be good. It can be bad. Another committee that is typically pretty busy, but also kind of boring, it's zoning. The big stuff goes through zoning, but it has a long, long agenda, and zoning committee meetings can last all day long. And so you may lose some meat and potatoes there because you're sort of slogging through all the boring routine stuff that's going on in that committee. Committee makeup. So the committees are, they're supposed to be decided by, they can be decided by aldermen, I will say. I've never seen that happen in my time, and apparently that's never happened before my time. But technically, the alderman could say, "We've decided as a group on a committee structure, and we've decided on the membership of that committee as a group, and we're going to present this and in the beginning of administration, all vote together to make it happen." Now, we all know 50 personalities with different agendas, different ideas, are sometimes hard to corral and get to agree amongst themselves. And so what typically happens is the mayor creates a committee structure. She assigns the chairman. Typically, they're mayoral allies. That was something that was really, really done in daily administration. It was almost a reward for loyalty. And then, you know, we work with the aldermen. Our various teams work with the aldermen to determine, what are your issue areas? What are you interested in? What committees do you want to participate in? And try to come up with a manageable number of members to participate in every committee. Sometimes they resign from committees. Sometimes they want to be added to committees. Sometimes there are subcommittees. But just know that there is some nuance there in who was on what committee. It's not coincidental that some people are left out or included. And it's very intentional about how committees are votes. Sorry, skipped to the wrong section. And then, other rule that's really important. I'm not gonna go through all these committees and their jurisdictions, but I strongly suggest you take a look at it. And also, if you're thinking about pushing an ordinance or a resolution, think really strategically about who you have to introduce something. If you have, for example, environmental bill, you would think, okay, well, what if I want to call my local legislator? That person's not on the committee. It's really, it's really difficult to get that item to move, right? Now, if you really want to get a lot of bang for your buck, you would have the chairman of the committee introduce your item that you're interested in. But not all committees meet every month, right? So if you introduce something and you really want it to move, you've got to make sure that you introduce it to a committee that meets every month without fail, which really the only committees that do that are finance and budget and something, and maybe license and transportation so that your item can be heard and moved swiftly. Otherwise, it may languish and then eventually die in a kilpo. And then, rule 41, buried in, towards the end of the rules of procedure, is a really fun rule called rule 41, which to me makes really not a lot of sense about why it was structured that way, intentionally a mystery to all involved. Rule 41 talks about some boring stuff, like setting the time of the council meeting and determining committees and blah, blah, blah. But it also talks about blocking legislation and legislation that's been held up. So, and this is where I think I'm gonna flip ahead a little bit, and we're gonna talk about how a bill becomes a law. So let's see. How bill becomes a law. You can look up all of bills, bills, but that's not actually a thing at city councils. Don't use that bad word. It's either an ordinance or a resolution. Sometimes it is a quarter or communication, but bills are not a thing at city council. You can look on Legistar to see all of the ordinances that have been filed, all the legislation that's been passed, all of the meetings, who's on council. It's actually a really helpful tool, so I highly recommend that you use it. It's, everything is on Legistar. There are no secrets on Legistar. Now, the next important part. Now, the next important part is how does a bill actually make it into the city code or become adopted, right? How it becomes a law? So, an item is submitted to the city clerk. And I say item by meaning ordinance, resolution, order, decree, whatever you want to call it. The item itself is submitted to the city clerk forty-eight hours before the city council meeting. That's actually a relatively new rule that changed because of COVID. Prior to that, if you ever came to a city council meeting, people would literally show up with stacks and stacks and stacks of paper and physically give them to the city clerk. COVID necessitated a change of that procedure, so now those are submitted electronically, which was like, I mean, it was very upsetting for all the parties involved. But they're now submitted electronically to the city clerk forty-eight hours before the city council meeting. The mayor submits legislation, the aldermen submit legislation, but also members of the public can submit legislation. And that's like a little known weird thing that isn't actually really documented as a rule, but we allow that to go on. I'm not sure that anything ever submitted by the public has actually made it to a full vote and then passed by the city council. That is something that members of the public can do and then the clerk submits it on their behalf. After the item is submitted and the clerk processes it and gives it an item number or ordinance number, it is assigned to a committee, sort of. Now, during the meetings, the clerk, during the city council meeting after instructions, the clerk will read out the things that have been introduced that are non-routine and will assign them to a particular committee that the sponsor has determined. Now, this is where things can get hairy. Let's say Alderman's honey introduces something and says, I wanted to go to the Committee on Environment. And for some reason, I don't like Alderman's honey's introduction. And I'm another alderman and I can say, no, I don't think that's the right committee for the bill or for the ordinance that you wrote. I think it should actually go to the Committee on Finance. I'll yell out, "Finance." And now there's a dispute about what committee and item will go to. That item goes to the Committee on Rules to first figure out, okay, well, what's the appropriate committee that this item goes to? And then the Rules Committee will vote as a group, send it to the correct committee. Now, when that happens, Rules doesn't meet often. They don't move a lot of things out of the Rules Committee. So when your item is sent to Rules, it really is where it goes to die. Sometimes it makes it out a few bill, a few ordinances have seen the light of day, but it really is very significant if something is sent to Rules. If it's not sent to Rules, the item is assigned to the committee. And then after council, the committee goes through and looks at all of the things that have been assigned and puts them on a meeting agenda. Now, they don't have to put everything that's been assigned to them on a meeting agenda, but under the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, they go through, determine what items they would like to hear that on or at that upcoming meeting and post them publicly so people know what's on the agenda, what's being voted on. After the, or during the committee meeting, items, vote on the item. Now, this is, committee meetings are where all the action happens, right? This is where there's all the debate on the item, you have speakers, witnesses, you can sometimes hear a little vanity, drama. But all of the details are worked out here. Now, if you're lean, everything should have been worked out in advance. But here, you can make amendments, you can change things, you can introduce substitutes, all sorts of things happen at committee, and that's where the majority of the action happens on an item. Assuming all goes well at committee, it is reported out, which means at the city council meeting, the alderman says, all right, these are all the things that passed in my committee meeting. I want the full council to vote on them. Council usually says, aye, it all passes and it all goes into effect. Now, this is another opportunity where things can go haywire, right? Because not every member of the council is on the committee. So if one of the most memorable votes I can remember was zoning item on cannabis. And it narrowly passed out of committee, but there was a lot of dissent about what was going to happen with the item, what's it pass the council. There were competing ordinances, there were other things that were subject to rule forty-one. And that day at city council, even though the zoning chairman said, okay, this item passed out of my committee, there was still a vote and it wasn't just a universal, we all pass, it was, all right, let's do a roll call. And that's something you'll hear a lot where you go through the entire role of fifty aldermen and they publicly vote a or an item. Typically, you just need a simple majority. There are circumstances where you need more than that, but I won't get into the hairy details of that. But so there can be a lot of things that happen there. There can be a lot of confusing things that happen there and I think that's what I hear people complain about the most with city council is that it's difficult to sometimes follow the action because there are all of these interceding motions the aldermen do. So they do things like motion to lay on the table, which means, I didn't like the way that that vote came out and I want to reconsider that vote. And so you'll hear, wait, are we supposed to vote yes or no on this motion? Or you'll hear motion to suspend the rules or motion to do X. I could say, I don't know, read the Rules of Order and Procedure and see if you can keep up. Also, read Robert Rules of Order. If you can flag down Jeff Levine, he'll be lurking around there at some point. Maybe he'll come and help you, but he probably won't. But just try to pay close attention. Some reporters are really keen on what happens and all these different rules and they'll have really good coverage live on Twitter about what's happening very quickly. I think that is really the majority of my formal presentation. So I'm happy to take questions. You guys interject with whatever, there's nothing taboo, I'll try to be as honest with you as I possibly can.
Great, thanks Tiffany. There's a bunch in the chat, so I'll go through and ask you these questions. People should feel free to add to the chat or raise their hand and I'll do you after all that, but there are a bunch of questions. And actually, like Jeff, I see you raising your hand and you asked a couple of questions already, but do you want to just ask them live? Go ahead.
No, I wanted, you can go ahead and ask those questions on my behalf. I just wanted to say that Tiffany was very, was an extraordinarily competent person in her position and I'm sure she is now as well. But one of the things that was most impressive was she pretty much single-handedly managed the transition to remote city council and committee meetings in COVID. And that was building a structure from the ground up, which began with the question of what, you know, what service should we use? Should we use Teams or Zoom or something else? And this all had to happen in a very short period of time and under a lot of pressure. So I just wanted to be sure that everyone was aware of Tiffany's prowess in that regard.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, thank you for joining us. I'm sure folks will have questions about the remote items as well. So we'll do, we'll do a question. Sorry, from, from your time in the CIGA, can you say what, what about that offices process worked well and what would you have done differently if you could?
Yeah, that's such a big question. I think what worked well is the cycle. It's very nice to have a routine and to know in advance what the schedule is going to be. There's a lot of set ways of doing things. They may not be super transparent or super clear to outsiders, but it was always helpful to us and I think once the city council got accustomed to how things worked, to have set processes and set rules about, about how things would work. What would I change? So IGA is responsible for managing the mayor's relationship with the aldermen to some extent. Now, that has changed dramatically over the history of the city. And so, yeah, you know, it would be great if I didn't have to wake up every day and figure out what happened in the news or, you know, which alderman is fighting with each other, the mayor. And I wish I had more control over people's personalities, but I think that's probably a universal wish that everyone has all the time. I mean, it really is a very busy office and a lot goes on there. So you really do well to get to know the mayor's IGA team. There's a team in DC composed of Alyssa Fisher and Chris Hoey. You should get to know them. There's a team in Chicago, which focuses on city council. A guy named Cheryl Dawson is deputy for that team. And then there's a Springfield team where you should get to know Patrick Hall and he's the deputy for that team. Get to know those people and hopefully stay in their good graces and they will be very helpful to you.
Great. I'm gonna, I see Peter raising his hand, but I'm gonna do a few more from the chat and then we'll get over there. Ryan has a question about, I think this is about the rules. How binding are the rules? For example, LRB is supposed to release a reporter votes every quarter, separate from the clerk, but that's not done. So do you just, like, what happens if the rules are not followed?
Well, there are sanctions. You know, I'll be totally honest with you, when I was in LRB, we never released a quarterly report of votes and I'm curious where you see that in the Rules of Order and Procedure. But probably because, you know, there's a duplicate. If LRB was to release a rules, a listing of votes and reports, they'd probably just say, hey clerk, hand me a list of the votes and then publish the same thing on their list, on their website. Like, there's really just not enough manpower in that office to keep track of every single vote and firmly publish them. So I think functionally, that's how that would probably work at the end of the day.
Can you recall, this is a question from Jeff. Can you recall and relate any special moments of terror and conversely of pride slash accomplishment in conjunction with your role in city council meetings? Otherwise, tell us some good stories.
There have been a lot of moments of terror. I think I publicly freaked out on Alderman Urban, like slammed my hand on the desk and was like, you're calling me a liar! And I think I just had like a full breakdown after a lot of, if anybody knows Alderman Jason Urban, he is a lovely person, I actually consider him a really good friend, but he certainly knows how to push my buttons in a unique way. So that was, that was a very challenging trying moment. There have been moments of terror where an alderman tells you they're gonna do one thing, you know, the mayor is expecting clean vote, clean meeting, things are gonna happen as normal and then an alderman is late or decides not to show up or says, well, I've changed my mind. Well, this has happened and now I have to do X and I really can't be moved off this position. And every time you feel a vote slowly slipping away from you, you probably see, apparently I have a good poker face, but I feel like internally I was dying inside sometimes when I was seeing these things happen. You could sometimes see me frantically running around the chambers trying to shore up my votes or making sure that my roll call is tight and the items we wanted to pass, if they didn't want to pass, were going to move in a way that we wanted them to. So yes, every month was a moment full of terror, of pride. I think one of the moments that I felt really excited was when we passed this cannabis zoning legislation. I just know it meant a lot to a lot of people, it's a hallmark of the city. I think a lot of people, you know, when I saw the line outside Dispense Street Thirty-Three, which is sort of close to my house, I was like, I helped do that for you guys, like, I hope you enjoy your pot. But no one sees the unsung heroes of, of the cannabis movement. But yeah, so it's all of, every month is a journey.
Let me ask one more and then I'll go to Peter there. I mean, we're gonna get to everybody's question, so don't worry, I see a lot more. But so you mentioned there's a hierarchy among the committees. Where does environmental protection and energy fall?
So one point of advice, I guess, is if you are bored and having initiative, go through and look through the city's budget. And therein, the budget for city council, you'll see the budget assigned to all of the committees. And I'm not gonna say that it's the only factor that tells you how important the committee is, but if you rank the committee's budgets and you sort descending, that is a very good indicator of where the committee falls within the ranking. Now, some people are very good negotiators, some people were able to get really great budgets, some people didn't get great budgets. It's not always just the end-all be-all. But I would say environmental protection and energy is very healthy budget. They don't meet a lot. They don't take on a lot of substantive issues. But the chairman of that committee is also the mayor's deputy floor leader now, which is sort of a new thing. So it is, it is helpful to understand the cardinal, the chairman of that committee has multiple roles and has mayor's ear, probably more than some other aldermen.
Peter, you want to ask your question and then I'll go back, unmute yourself, go ahead.
Yes. I was looking at a mayor and council member handbook. This one happens to be for the Association of Washington Cities. Interestingly, I was looking for overhaul methods and policy approaches to the procedural rules that Tiffany you were speaking about as being so dramatic, shall we say. And what I, and my question is, is there any legitimate way to institute some kind of a review and overhaul, any mechanism for that? Especially in the city of Chicago, which I think sometimes can be overly resistant to that kind of change.
I would say that would certainly be controversial. I think, you know, that you'd really have to have a champion within the council, likely a mayor, that, I will say, when Mayor Lightfoot started, one of the things that she wanted to do is make those rules more transparent. I think what you'll see is there's a lot of, there's a lot of grandfathering in of meaningless rules that happen over time based on certain circumstances or, or things that are merely just there to act as safeguards and provide structure to the committees. If there was an appetite to do it, I would say that probably would need to be led by either a mayor or the chairman of the Committee on Rules. And it would kind of be like a good government thing, right? Which is, which is typically very difficult to do as an outsider. So we definitely have to start from within. But I mean, yes, the rules could be amended, they could be rewritten, adopted by the full city council and approved in place. It is possible theoretically. I don't know that there's a lot of appetite for that to happen, but it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Peter. There's a question about Rules Committee. And I definitely have questions about this too, especially comparing it to the state. Can you clarify why you can pass rules and go to committee? Does all legislation go through rules and then to committee?
So it's funny, because I didn't know anything about the state rules and only new city council rules. And so when I heard that everything goes to rules, I'm like, that's ridiculous. Why would they do that at the state? The city were very straightforward. Things don't automatically go to rules because when you introduce an item, you say, this is a committee I wanted to go to. And typically, ninety-eight percent of the time, that's the committee that the item goes to and no one argues about it. And the jurisdictions of the committees are written broadly and they generally have appropriate jurisdiction here in item. I've never seen anyone at committee dispute whether an item belonged in that committee or not. It's certainly something they could do, but I've never seen it happen, so I don't know what would happen. Typically, what would happen is soon as the item is introduced, and this requires, this is what makes city council tricky, is unless you're psychic or have some inside knowledge, how would you know what your colleague is going to introduce, right? We sort of helped become a lot more transparent when we switched to virtual meetings. People now had to submit things forty-eight hours in advance. And so typically, all of the introductions are posted on the clerk's site. Sometimes a full text of it is. So you know what people are going to introduce and you know that you can mess with their stuff. But before that, it was just a giant stack of paper, right? That they handed to the clerk and that was it. And you might not have any idea what anyone is doing. So really, your real opportunity to fudge with people's introductions is by saying, okay, I don't like the committee that you've assigned it to. I'm going to call it a different committee and then you can go to Rules and we can figure it out there. But just so you know, Rules doesn't meet every month, they don't meet every other month. You know, in a good year, right, they might meet three times a year, once a year. You can, there are certain procedures that you can use to force that committee to meet if they haven't taken any action on your item. But typically, those aren't often used and not well understood by a lot of people. But you could do that and force your item out of the Rules Committee. But yeah, not everything goes to Rules and it's very infrequently invoked.
Tiffany, those processes have been used a lot more often since you left, so you left at a good time.
I left at a good time.
Okay, so why do some ordinances? Okay. So why do some ordinances become substitute ordinances when the tax hasn't changed from when it was an ordinance?
If the tax hasn't changed, I'm not sure why it would be a substitute. There might be like a small change, right? It could be just a typographical error or some sort of, call it Scrivener's error. But it doesn't have to be a substantive change to have substitute ordinance. But typically if there is a substance, it's like the existence of something being a substitute doesn't necessarily give you a big flag that there's something wrong. It could be something very minor.
So this is a good political opinion one. Are fifty aldermen too many aldermen? I think LA has fifteen aldermen.
I have a unique relationship with all fifty aldermen. It's a lot to handle. It's a lot to manage. But Chicago is a big city and having fifty is unique to our structure. I think, yeah, there's, there's arguments on every side and I won't take on the hot button issue if we should eliminate some of them or not. I know with respect to my job in mayor's office, yes, my life would have been a lot easier if there were less than fifty aldermen. But, you know, it's, our city is really unique and really diverse. And it is nice as a constituent to have someone who really represents your unique interests as a constituent, as reflective of your community.
And somebody had asked what IGA stands for and that's Intergovernmental Affairs. So just answer that one real quick. Okay. So this is another one related to rules. If an alder sends a proposed ordinance to the rules committee, is it written somewhere which alder sends it? They referenced the forestry advisory board and no one knew who sent it to rules.
No, you can, if you watch enough city council meetings, you might be able to recognize people's voices, but people can always go, ah, wrong. And call something out. And sometimes the mayor presiding officer will ask who said that? And that will be on the record and then you can figure out who sent it to rules. But otherwise, no, it's not documented. Who sent your item to rules? Sometimes people never admit it. It's just a mystery of the council.
So do new alders get a boot camp in all of this and they start?
They do get a boot camp. It is, I think Jeff gives a boot camp of at least the rules of procedure. And then they get an introduction to all of the new departments. They get to meet all of the department government, government affairs teams. It gets to meet all the department commissioners and leaders and talk about initiatives. But it's just like drinking from a fire. It's right. There is like a little boot camp training session. And I will say Chairman Burke used to have this huge manual that laid out everything and he kind of prepared everything and led this. Since he is no longer the chairman of the finance committee that's in stocks. And so this last batch did not get the same boot camp that everybody else got.
Do aldermen get in trouble if they don't show up when they're not supposed to? Or is the only accountability sanctioned and not getting reelected?
Yeah, they don't get in trouble if they don't show up and they're not supposed to. We sort of depend on the people to speak with their vote, right? If you know, and I think BGA and some other like watchdog agencies do these reports regularly where they show your alderman only showed up to XYZ number of meetings. You want to take a look at that, see how engaged your alderman is with city council.
I'm skipping, like I, I do have the role, I'll copy that from Ryan, but a similar one, how do the non-lawyers who are alders fare in city council versus the lawyers in city council?
I, I don't think, I think it's more about experience, right? You can be an attorney and know a lot about this. But if you've been, like, my husband is a class action litigation attorney, right? He doesn't know anything about this. And every time we like talk shop, he's like, your job makes no sense. The way that you do things is completely illogical. I don't know why it works this way. You know, versus someone who's been around city council for a billion years, that, not a billion, there's no one that old, but someone who's been around city council for ten or fifteen years plus, that's not an attorney, but just knows how things work, does really well. I think when you run it, where you run into tension is maybe some new folks that try to emulate the, all those years of experience, but don't quite have it. And then they make a lot of public errors, which can be sometimes embarrassing.
And I think this might be our last question, especially because we're nearly out of time. But it also is the last question in the chat. We'll see if there's any other quick ones. Please type them in the chat. But can you describe the process when an advocacy group has an ordinance that they want passed and how it eventually gets to be passed? That is, can you talk about how the horse trading and sausage gets made along the way? We want stories, so. Anything there like, like especially most of the folks on the phone today, you know, there's a bunch of lawyers for CLE. And I will put the CLE link in the chat for you all. But yeah, how does an advocacy group get an ordinance done?
Well, it depends on the weight of the advocacy group, right? If you've got someone like CTU or a CIU, or it's a group of community members, that, that has a dramatic impact on how something gets passed. Now, I would say the most direct route, what used to be the most direct route is getting in contact with the mayor, having the mayor support your initiative and shepherd it through the council and get it passed, right? Now, that does not always work in every instance because the mayor's relationship with every advocacy group is different. And right, sometimes it's not even a reflection of priorities. It's just that it's a small enough issue where it's not necessarily on mayor's radar. The other way they can do that is to link up with lobbyist or another big group. One of the things that I think of is, what was it? Warehouse workers, right? Which is not necessarily a huge group in and of itself. But when we were talking about the Fair Work Week ordinance and minimum wage ordinance, they certainly had a seat at the table because they joined a coalition. And they joined a coalition that included SCU. They joined a coalition that included a lot of other smaller groups, united working families. And all of those groups had connections to aldermen and were, and were powerful enough to bend the ear of the mayor, other senior members of the council. And so they were able to push that initiative, even though it wasn't necessarily a mayoral initiative. It became important because of the gravity of, of the groups involved. You really want to be strategic when picking your sponsors? Know your sponsor. I can't say this to people. Know your sponsor really well. Know that they're going to keep something a priority and that they're going to be effective shepherding it through the council. You have to have your, you've got to have a sponsor that's going to be involved and engaged. It's going to push for meetings. It's going to push to get things through. It's going to be able to negotiate to shepherd things through for you. It's a really ugly process. I think working on the Fair Work Week ordinance was one of the most traumatic things I've ever done. I chased someone down hallway at one point. But it was, it was a lot of sausage making. It was a lot of late nights. It was a lot of hours. It was a lot of, there's actually the attorney that worked on it. I think it's on the CLE. He probably rewrote at least a hundred revisions of that ordinance as we kept going through the process. So it can be really ugly, but I think you really want to align with people who have the ear of legislators. And that will help you get through the process. It's probably the best way to do it.
Tiffany, you might mention horse carriages. That was an interesting example of advocacy coming from an odd place.
That was horrible. So everybody loves animals, but horse care, the horse carriages that used to go down Michigan Avenue were very, very controversial. And honestly, they were on an island alone. There were not a lot of people that were supportive of the horse carriage business, besides the horse carriage owners. And there were a lot of anti-animal cruelty people that were very against the horse carriages. I mean, they dropped off books with signatures. They posted up outside of my office and refused to leave. They called every day. They emailed. They set up Facebook campaigns. They finally found a sponsor that was willing to push for them. And by the end, it was like, they just won by sheer force of exhausting the heck out of everybody involved over years and years of asking. So if you have a lot of time and energy that you want to put into something, you can certainly, you can certainly get things moved that way. But that's probably the harder route. But they were effective and horse carriages are known, noted in the city.
Well, thank you so much. We're just at 1:00 PM. So this is great, perfect timing. This has been, I know that I have learned a whole ton about how city council works. So I hope everybody else appreciated it too. We're so grateful, Tiffany. But just some, some quick announcements. We did put the CLE link in the chat for any attendees. And if it doesn't work, email me. I put my email in the chat as well. Our next CLE is going to be, I think it's Friday, June fourth, Intro to Energy Law. We have a bunch of CLE in the series. So tell all of your attorney friends to come get some free CLE from us and learn about environmental issues before the deadline. I know a lot of you like me need to get it in before June thirtieth. So we're, we're here to help you out. But again, thank you so much Tiffany for joining us today. We have a bunch of links in the chat. And we'll also make this, this recording available. So thanks again, everybody, and have a great day.
Thanks Tiffany.
Thank you.
For coming.
Thank you.